Good evening. District 1 Hammer French has kids absent. District 2 Amy Hart is absent. District 3 Billy McGovern.
Here.
District 4 Lou Ru.
Here.
District 5 Randy Thomas.
Here.
It's now time for our political allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Political allegiance to the United States of America and to their promise which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every just as well.
May I have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Thank you.
Mr. McCann, your motion second?
Second.
Mr. McCann, your second on paper. It's now time for this month's recognition. Mr. McCann, your honor. Well, good evening, everyone. We're high happy and proud to recognize these two student athletes. We always like to recognize state champs, and these two won a state championship in the track and field up in UK. So first up, we'd like to recognize for the state championship in the shot put, that's Noah Nichols. And also winning a state championship in the discus, Manny Baker. Good job Noah and Manny for our two state championships to end out the school year.
That's a good way to end the school year. I'm not sure about that. For you parents, if you want to take a couple minutes recess, there is a backdrop. You might get some tickets for students and the awards. Your service is welcome to leave if you have a place to be or you can come back to the board meeting. But we'll take a quick pause for about a couple minutes.
Wow. I don't know how much.
The lawyers. I already figured out. So what I'm doing is seeing my studies. I mean, I probably have to say she's on screen to figure out what's really going on. I think they were right. She's, I mean, I do know that they go a lot. I mean, yes.
No, it's not. I saw for the last thirty years.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to continue on for our monthly board meeting. We have no other time for public participation, so we'll go ahead and move on to our reports. And first up is our finance office report.
Okay. The attachments on there will have separated in the beginning. And we're writing it with your basic release here and see this month, next month, all of those expenses are really inflated at this point in time. We've done multiple payrolls now. In June, they aren't collected on this report yet, but basically we have one final payroll for all of our employees at this time. So May and June are just heavy moments on the expense side, and what I'm seeing is much elevated because all the tax revenues are already basically been collected, so it's our present here and there. But for most part, these are our heavy expense matters today. So the bottom line, I mean, and most everything is staying pretty consistent. Otherwise, on the revenue front, you know, we have a fifteen percent increase from last fiscal year on our total revenue. On the expense side, those are about eleven percent compared to the prior fiscal year. And then overall, our ending balance is twenty-three percent higher than last fiscal year. So everything is looking good as of now. We have a lot of moving parts going on right now, though we need to, you know, have a better picture of where we're going in, obviously, in this month. We still have moving parts ahead and all the way up until our financial statement or complete, you know, good work. So any questions?
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scratch your board for the certified evaluation plan. I would be Jason McAllister.
Hello, everybody. This is just our yearly update for the evaluation plan. We have a committee gathered over spring, made up of fifty percent of teachers or certified positions and fifty percent administrative positions. And the changes this year, we did have to make some changes for the first time in a couple of years, and those changes are just to reflect the new laws that came out. The law that impacted the certified evaluation plan was asking for tenured teachers to go to a five-year evaluation cycle as opposed to a three-year cycle. So the current cycle we're in now, every third year, they receive a full evaluation. That cycle would be pushed back to five years, once every five years, to just try to remove some paperwork and to measure things from teachers and make evaluations a little less often. So the committee got together and made a plan for that, about how we would, how we came up with a just kind of a five-year cycle of when their observations would be and then when their evaluations would be. So the plan reflects those changes. That's all the changes made this year.
Thank you, sir. Next will be our food service report.
All right. Give us to all of you. There you go. So by law, I have to do a report once a year. Always pick when school is out, so we're going to get this school year done and out of the way. Started off this school year being under review with not only our school programs and our after-school programs, everything was closed. I think they closed them late July. So everything was good. We passed all of those. The few problems that we had were fixed and on there. As you can tell, we run four different programs a year, the school breakfast program, national lunch program, the child and adult care program, and some feeding. With those, we served seven hundred and eighty-four thousand meals last year out of our agents, plus thirty of my staff members, about twenty-eight and nine assistant record men. The upgrade that we did this year, as you all tell, the high school cafeteria, you have James Street over there, it's a nice place. They're taking care of it. Kids enjoy it, staff do it. We added some equipment to some of the schools and some of the refrigeration. Staff retention within my department's year is ninety-four percent. I can explain those. I have one retired that's been here for years. I have one moved away, and I have one as a sick family member, she decided to go down onto the suburbs because she didn't want to tarnish her name, and she didn't want to hurt dishes. So that's great. It's the first time since I've been there, third six years, and I've not had to hire people since then. So I've been all year willing to hire them. Our goals were met for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The main one is farming school. Versus County Food Service Department spent hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars this year with local farmers. And when I say local, that's within forty miles of where my office sits there in the middle. That's a huge thing. We're one of the biggest districts or one of, I can't say biggest district, but we, as our district, spent some of those money on a partner's school, bringing that in. So my goal this year is that every trade that we have is to have something that is growing or pulling me in. We've been about that for some days, and everything we hit's been moving along. Of course, staff retention and high participation for breakfast and lunch, we raised both of those numbers for our class by twenty-two percent this year, which is very, King Middle School was a big asset to that. And lunches have not improved by percent this year. King Middle also was a contributing factor to that. As you can tell, reimbursements for this following year or this past year, we're at two point nine million. We're doing great kinds of financials. And I put that on my staff. I can run skeleton crews in the kitchens, and they still come out of. Goals for next year, still to keep that partner's school going, to keep those local partners, keep our community involved. Of course, staff retention. Pintagee has a new kitchen. That's something that's big on ours with the one normator and getting that staff training and ready going when school starts next year. And just the efficiency within our kitchen, keeping it going. And then our auto, we're actually have made good, great kinds of right features, so.
I was going to say, I talked to all the hospitalers. You enjoyed staying, and everything is great, and it looked great.
It was a fun year. It's nice working with partners, keeping them local. Like I said, everything that we did, most of the part that weighs for my year in versus the county. Of course, we had to go out to boil and paste some few things because we can't produce it, but that's been something I've wanted to do for years. And so I'm still able to give back to the community with this, so.
Well, I'm glad that you gave everything, like you said, very close.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Personnel report was shared here at our, I think I might have a chance to think of that. So we will go ahead and move forward with the elementary school update. Trace Crete's here. Let the video start. I want to talk, it's old. It's a little different this time. We're back, so we have, we have a, this time we have a different pilot that is working with the video, so you can see a lot better quality and a little more detail, so. As you can see, the instructions come along good the last thirty days. Guys, we can control the weather a little bit better, we appreciate it, but in the last thirty days, they continued the underground potential basin. It's all gotten covered. They've installed grains and continue to install them, store grains to that direction. Begin installing the geothermal loop lines and begin the installation of the geothermal vault. There, there's a good shot of area A, which is the pitch roof. This video was taken on Friday, so all of that decking is on now, and the contractor actually loaded the roof this afternoon with the insulation for the beginning of the roof. The back two sections, the building D and E, those roofs are completed and ready for the roof for the start. Contractors continue to work with the CMU as the building moves forward, working in the cafeteria and the gym and A hill area, those tall walls there. All the contractors are continuing with all the roof ends, all the above ceiling stuff in those back two sections, which is the closest to you, silvery ones, D, the lighter one is E. All of those well broken ends are going in, HVAC, electrical plumbing. They started hanging the copper pipe in there, security building down with solid wood coverings, open doors and temporary doors in the end, or the windows, temporary doors with the ends and the latches and locks to try to protect that and share it with the best possible. Over the next thirty days, they're going to, of course, continue with the water line excavation. Sorry, I missed it. Water line excavation up front, down next to the road, they've got the ex portion in front of the school done. Contractor continue with the geothermal, working toward that direction and the installation of the geothermal vault. Contractors around the, continue with the overhead left in area is D and E, they're going to move into area A and start the overheads in there. This coming week, the contractor was called in the office late this afternoon, they're going to start delivering whatever, bring the overage breaker for area A, which is up, the game of roof up next to the road tomorrow. And as I said, the contractor delivered the installation for area A, so they're ready to start parking the roof installation on areas A, B, and E as they're building the building, B and C. We're working out, we're just working it jumbled up. We're not working in an A, B, C, or D, we're not working in E, B, C, B, A, we're just here and there, but it's, there's a method to manage. Any questions? Concerns? Complaints? It's not raining as much. At least you got her. Well, if, if, once we get roof, we control the inside, still the outside, we've got a problem, we do start to control the other side of the inside. So those roofs out there now are helping us with freezing contractors, the metal decking on there now, as freezing contractors can proceed down with the roofing material on the inside, we get, we get that secured and stuff like piping conduit, it's, what moisture does, it through that, that, you know, front roof goes on, it's not an issue. What we're having to hold off on was any, you know, insulation, pipe insulation, HVAC insulation, plumbing insulation, stuff like that until we start getting dryer. But that comes back, it's when the roof starts coming up. Area A, I don't know, E, is the, is that, that roof, the corner roof down there, has to be certain moisture content? Yes, it does. Does the, does the weather, sure the weather has to shake that sun? It, it doesn't affect it much because the moisture content's looking accurate on the inside, and he's, the contractor, the roof contractor, has been monitoring that every two weeks. He was theorized, this, this is the easier, for the analyzing, it's up to moisture reading, and it's, sections of the roof is already within tolerance, but there's some small spots here and there, just some minimal spots that they're still monitoring, but we feel like we, probably within the next week to ten days, that will be in there. What moisture falls on the top is not really saturating that concrete, the sun will not let it rise it up, so it's not affecting as much as you think it would. It's more of the curing inside, and actually, that would cure a little bit faster if it was ninety degrees and sunny instead of seventy-five degrees and, you know, cloudy, but it's still, the moisture content is still cured out at an acceptable rate. So we see no issue with that, that's right. Good question. Why does it not help us at the time? It's not helping us, I'll say that. I mean, you know, it's, so to say it's not helping is, I mean, there's been, and we talked about it in each progress, man, there's been, you know, a month, a day since the project started. Right now, we've been able to revamp the schedule and keep everything on schedule. Caleb and Joey did a great job, I give them credit. They went through a lot of rework on the schedule, they give it to me, I would pick apart and find what I thought was problems with it, but that's what, that's, that's how we wanted to do it. But anyway, we've really revamped the schedule, we've moved some things around, some components around, when they weren't going to start, but where they're now going to start, and we've still been able to maintain, keep everyone in the same durations, which is the big thing. Every contractor, we have to allow them the durations that we put in the original schedule, but we have to look at those durations around in different pieces and different times of the year, and we've been able to revamp that and still keep some schedules to complete the job when we first started the project. So if we get, we get a good dry summer, we'll be in good shape. I mean, with rain, and I know that's a big order to ask. Last time I did that, you said you put in an order for it stopped, and it did, so, well, we'll take two more. Anything else? I said do so. I understand, it's open wheel. All right, thank you guys, we appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity. If there's any questions, you all have orders. All right, next will be our super tennis report. A few things ahead. Academics, graduations, well, we're starting to rain, the rain held off for both of our graduates, the Versus Central Bay treatment and the high school. So we got all our seniors graduated. It was great to see our seniors having millions of dollars, I don't know the exact amount, but having millions of dollars in scholarships that they received. I know the parents were really happy in the stands watching that award show, also all underclassmen, awards bankers went, went. Well, our arts, I was fortunate enough to get to see our kids perform and attended the Bradley Awards Show in Louisville. That was, that was unbelievable. And just to see our, our kids on the big stage, and of course, we're up for four awards, and that was, that was a neat experience. And I know all the kids got to go to the drama department to watch that, just to, so they get that character, want to get nominated for that again next year. So I know they've already picked their two plans for next year, so we're looking forward to that. Arts showcase month, we really enjoyed showing off the whole arts department and all the schools throughout that month, and that really goes well also. In athletics, we've had another Hall of Fame meeting tonight, or this evening. We've got all the plaques designed, and we're about to, to order them, and we're about to get the room wrapped in, in some pictures and memorabilia. We, of course, recognize two state champions in track and field alike, and I've been learning a lot, you know, with the new stadium that we're going to build up, and meeting with Astral Turf Tennis Courts and, and track, track service companies. I've learned a lot about track service, I've got a few samples here, right, tennis courts and post pitch and concrete for tennis courts, and, like I said, football stadiums. So we learned a lot about it in the design phase, and we're going to make this for our new stadium. As we look forward to next school year, there's a lot to be excited about. Every student will have meaningful opportunities to grow, not just academically, but really we're going to focus in on critical soft skills next year, like communication, collaboration, leadership. And for the second year in a row, we're going to be placing a renewed emphasis on helping all students become better riders. And that was a big emphasis last year, there will be again another one this year. We'll see the completion of a brand-new elementary school that's coming here, creating a modern student center, learning environment for our youth titans. And we'll begin the design process, like I said, for a new stadium, tennis courts. Those are exciting, and it's going to be a year of growth, progress, and momentum, and we're out to be moving forward together with you all, our support team, our staff, our community. And it's just, I'm looking forward to this year, it's going to be an exciting year, we got a lot of some things to do, a lot of neat projects coming onboard, and a lot of things that we're stressing in the classroom of this elementary school. Good for all of us, thank you very much. Senate agenda is next. Everybody should have an opportunity to vote, if anyone's going there. Does anyone have anything to bring to the table? One, I do want to bring out a set of, at the board, educational director, that's a corporate review for the last year, and I do want to share that the, the, and that is a, an exemplary rating on these seven standards of leadership, and as I showed you, it's so great, your leadership, cultural creative here for schools, the academic, athletics, and our standards, that you and the team work so hard and put it in place, and I know we're excited for the next few years of here in schools. Thank you for that, well-earned rating score, so, so, very much, I'll give you. John, just, if you must, thank for what you said, and I would appreciate the job you did, John, based on, and the, sometimes you look at, look at the exemplary ratings, you think, well, he's going, he's going to see all that and back off a little bit, but we don't see him back off. That's the thing I appreciate about it, is you keep going and keep trying to improve and move forward today, which is, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, my thoughts are, I mean, it's obvious that the change that we've had over the last four years, it's undeniable, so we don't have to say anything, we can just look at our school system and see the improvement, so we appreciate it.
My dear loyal team, your loyal team. It is a good team. Now that I've spoken to Senator Jim, can I please have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. McCann, your second?
Second.
McCann, your second on paper.
Thank you.
Next, we have action on the school discussion, and first one, we have an A school emergency plans, revision plans, and master schedule. This will be a first reading, please, Mr. McCann.
The schools have submitted their emergency plans, its emergency plans, and master schedule we already, the school site base has approved those plans, but we do share those with you all, so you can do, they're there, and those are awesome, not publicly shared, because they're working some work, there's a big question on those.
So that's the first reading, that one. Next, we start our policy policies.
Yes, and I have to go to Chief Allen to be here, he's showing me specific questions about those. When we formed the police department years ago, we submitted the policies, following the model policies for the local cities, and then over the years, Chief Allen has kind of updated those policies to be more in line with what we're actually doing. So he is reviewing those, and those are the policies that his department is following. Mr. McCann, please.
I'll tell you. I'll tell you.
Chief Allen, good, you, you worked probably under, I appreciate it that you all have it.
Thanks, sir.
Next, our policy updates, first reading. So this is the first reading of our updates that we do annually. All these are KSBA, sent to us by KSBA, we review everyone, making adjustments, tweaks. Me too, I wish those were attached to the, the first readings, we've got a lot to change in, we see that, again, we made the corrections, we believe that we need to do for this upcoming school year. Next, we give award, the procedure updates, first reading of this one as well. Yes, so these procedures, we just need really one reading, we can vote on them. We put them on there as a first reading, just so you, because you can't have the policy, you can't have the procedures for the policy, so those will be on there, copy and paste that on the next, July board meeting, but that's just so you all can look over those over the next thirty days and review those as well as procedures. Do we need to do that most nights? No. I don't do that as well. Okay, next up, we have district plans, the second reading for next year.
Yes, so I hope you all probably have been doing a whole lot of reading the last couple of weeks, and these are all the district plans that we have to have. Code of Conduct, the emergency plans, and the safety plans are all those plans that we have you look at every year, and the highlights are in yellow, so if you had any questions about those, and if not, if you heard those, we'll look at those changes.
Everybody's got a chance to look at those, hear anything, does anybody have any questions? If no questions, can I have a motion to approve?
I can get a motion.
Mr. McCann, with the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCann, your second on paper.
Thank you.
Up next will be the traceable communications policy, and this is actually the second reading of this policy. Do you have anything more to add to this? I'm not sure I have any more question, of course, just like you said, this is in response to Centerville 181. There's been a lot of talk around the state of Kentucky in all the districts, and how they're going to implement all of this, but we think we've got a good plan. Of course, we did speak about this last week in our special Capitol board meeting, and this is the second reading. Is there any questions since last Thursday? I think there's going to be two maybe questions, as this gets into, I think there's just a lot of, it's still, it's maybe discovered some, this stuff's got to be figured out. I understand. Yeah, well, like, like I said the other night, it's one another one.
So he is reading those and those are the policies that his department has filed. Mr. Prue, please.
Chief Allen, good, you've worked on it, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next, more policy updates, first reading.
So this is the first reading of our updates that we do annually. All these are KSBA, sent to us by KSBA. We review everyone up, making adjustments, tweaks. Me too. Those were attached to the first readings, we've got a lot to change. And we see that, again, we made the corrections, we believe, that we need to do for the upcoming school year.
Next will be the board of procedure updates, first reading, and this is a lot.
Yes, so these procedures are just need really one reading, we can vote on them. We put them on there as a first reading, just so you, because you can't have the policy, you can't have the procedures for the policy. So those will be on there, copy and paste that on the next July board meeting. But that's just so you all can look over those over the next thirty days and review those as one of those procedures.
Do we need to go to those slides?
No.
Okay, next up, we have district plans, the second reading for next year.
Yes, so I thought you all probably knew a whole lot of reading over the last couple of weeks. And these are all the district plans that we have to have. Quota conduct, the emergency plans, and the safety plans are all those plans that we have to look at every year. And then the highlights were in yellow. So if you had any questions about those, and if not, if you heard those, we'll make those changes.
Everybody's got a chance to look at those, you don't think that? Does anybody have any questions? If no questions, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. McGovern with the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Prue, second on paper.
Thank you, ma'am.
Up next will be the traceable communications policy. And this is actually the second reading of this policy. Do you have anything more to add, to discuss this? This is kind of.
Not much more to add. Any more questions, of course, just like you said, this is in response to Senate Bill 181. There's been a lot of talk around the state of Kentucky in all the districts, and how they're going to implement all of this. But we think we've got a good plan. Of course, we did speak about this last week at our special board meeting. And this is the second reading. Is there any questions since last Thursday?
I think there's going to be a few questions as this gets into it. I think there's just a lot. It's still, maybe discovered some, or stuff's got to be figured out.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, like I said, it's one of those things that you have legislators from things that are said that could have been a little super well. They'll have to change things on after two, three years to get it right. Or clear.
Does anyone have any other questions or discussion? If not, can I please have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. McGovern makes a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Prue, second on paper. Connected to that is the consent, this is a form for the outside traceable communications.
So if a parent wants to give permission to an employee or volunteer to communicate with someone outside of the traceable communication that you all approved next, that they would fill this form out. They have to do it for each individual, so they can't list all the football coaches on there. If there's ten football coaches, you have to do one per, one per employee or volunteer. We said at the end of the night, this could be like, let's say, someone at the elementary, an instructional assistant had, uses one of the high school students as a vacancy. You know, they make them want to communicate through text. So in order for that, I, the elementary to communicate with them via text, they'd have to fill this out. The parent would have to fill this out and say, it's okay, it's the vacancy services. This is just a form, and we're going to do that.
And a form would have to be completed for each. Each team, staff member, coach, teacher, that a parent would give permission to.
Each person that you want to give permission to. Yeah, and it's like you said, if it was a football player and you got like ten coaches, this football player that plays basketball, who's got a couple of coaches there. Then he plays baseball, who's got two. You're going to have fifteen.
So because of that, yeah, because of what you said, we're going to encourage all of our coaches to just do traceable communications. That way, they can do group text out to everyone, not text, group messaging out to everyone through whatever, like remind app or whatever. Yeah, that would make it difficult. But, you know, there's some things being hashed out. Like I said, you can be a church youth leader, and you have youth group on Wednesday nights, and you have students from all kinds of districts around in central Kentucky. And, you know, if they're an employee or a volunteer in the school system, they're going to have to get permission by this law in order to text all our people that's in their school. If it's also a home business.
In a case like that, let's see if I can see this, I'm thinking. If we are using traceable communications here where it's lawful, but then, like you say, we've got, say, we've got a teacher or coach or whatever that's usually their church. Now, if they use some other kind of communication with a kid there, does it come back on us then?
Yes. If you all have not approved that traceable communication platform, the churches, then they cannot use material with the churches. That's not being approved by us unless the parents come in and say, hey, I don't mind using non-traceable for this particular employee. And that's why this form is there. But it is a little work on the parent. And the people collecting it and sending it to coaches or the teachers, volunteers, in order to let them know.
I happen to see somebody having a problem with it and not even realizing that they've done anything wrong. That's the thing, I see.
Any further questions? Yeah, Caleb's writing on it. Does anybody have else, any mayhem, has any questions about this or ask for a motion to approve?
Yes, this procedure says it needs a first reading.
Is there any stage here, is there any bringing in? Do you have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Prue with the motion, second?
Second.
Mr. McGovern's second on paper. Last item to discuss is the approved list of these traceable communications systems.
So each month, maybe moving forward the next couple of months, just to make sure we've got everybody, everything listed that we use that's traceable, that our teachers and coaches use. We've listed ten here that currently we know that are traceable and that our staff members use. And those are Google Education Suite, Apollo, Edge nudity, Class Dojo, Remind, and Infamous Campus. District provided email, Payroll, Radiant, and Clever. So at this time, they're saying that's approved, these ten is traceable communications. And then when a letter goes out to our staff and our community or parents, they'll be, they'll all be, this is, right now, currently, it's these ten platforms. Everything else is non-traceable or not approved by you all. And they're not supposed to use that unless they fill out their consent, and we will just approve.
Any questions?
These are some that we, that our teachers are using now.
Yes.
We may just be approved for each month. If nothing else, any questions, can I have a motion to approve this list?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. McGovern makes a motion, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Prue, on paper. We now have three items for roll call vote. The first one is the salary schedule updates for next year.
Soon as you all approve these last month, I instantly have changes within the next, for that, that's how it normally goes. So there is an outline of all of the changes. We do have some that are just technical kind of language issues. So this is the twenty-four, twenty-five changes, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's the thing. We have the national award piece in two different places. Our language operating changes have changed, because we changed our policy mid-year this last year on the fact that they can also, if they have a rank change between September sixteenth and January fifteenth, they can put that in to have that rank change basically for the second semester. So I made a change as far as that language goes to reflect that. ROTs and PTs, moving them to be based on the rank one instead of the rank two. The Frisky clerk, who currently has a range of one hundred and forty to one hundred and ninety-five days, I mean, one hundred and one hundred and five instead. Removing the doctorate for those classified salary positions, because that's really included in those other two PT positions, and that's the change for that. And then everything below that is coaching. So there's a huge majority of those that are middle school. And Mr. McGovern and I actually, you know, it was brought to our attention that some districts around us have made some changes to their coaching stipends, that thing. So we did a comparison, and we're trying to get a little bit more in line and more consistent on our, and even with some of those positions. That's basically what all of those changes are after that. Are there any questions?
I have one on that, on that list, number seventeen. Assistant volleyball coach to twenty-seven, fifty-five, from eleven oh two. Well, volleyball coach, that's for high school. One, ones above.
Yeah, and ones on fifteen, fifteen down there are middle school, and then seventeen down are high school. There are only two of high school. Because we had made a couple of changes to those on the original salary schedule. But everything, fifteen down where it says seventeen there, that's basically off the page number. If you were to look at the page number at the bottom of the salary schedule. So that's high school, so there are only two of those.
I saw a lot of assistant coach making all of them.
Yeah.
I'd rather be assistant coach than the head coach.
Yeah.
Most districts approve their salary schedule for next year in May. And I always tell, hey, this is why I like to make it like the first week or two of June. So because we're all doing it in the exact same week, usually, you can't count and see what people are doing. And our middle school coaching stipends were lower than a few that were surrendered. And it's everything that improved, and so a lot of that is, like you said, middle school coaching stipends.
If no further questions, can I please have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Prue with the motion?
Second.
Governor's second.
District three, Governor McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Ray Evans?
Yes. BG four for the asphalt paving project.
So this is asphalt paving project we did last year, because we utilized residual construction funds from old projects to do that project. It had to go through the fact of hack and process for construction for KDE. So this is the BG board for it, one step closer. Next month, we're going to see the BG five to close it completely out. So overall cost for that was two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three fifty-six. That's why we wanted to utilize some of those residual funds in order to complete that project. Any questions?
If no questions, can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Mr. McGovern with the motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Prue, the second.
District three, Governor McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Ray Evans?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. L. Andrews go, brief change order, Ross Tompkins.
So this is actually not a true change order. The paperwork for that will be next month. So we wanted to get this on the agenda today, just due to the urgency of the construction schedule and with this being related. So what we're seeing there, we actually just got a revised quote that's less than that. So all the pricing is still influx, it's going down, which is good. So we're hoping that we could get a notice to proceed based on, you know, a not to exceed cost for this issue to explain what is going on. The, it's area B, which is the storm shelter, and it actually has a flat deck. And the, that was, that's correct, that was installed for the structural drawings. The architectural drawings show the taper, which it needs to taper to drain water. But it was relying on the deck to create the taper. So now the insulation has to be tapered to get the water to drain to the scatters. So the cost is adding additional material, this is its flat. And as you taper up, you have additional material to create a bridge to taper to both sides. So that's the additional cost here. It's not anything double or, it's just extra material to get the slope through the tapered insulation. So the urgency is that there is a truck Monday, Tuesday raining to bring that tapered insulation. And so to not be a month behind for the rain to get that agreed. The revised pricing is twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty, so it's gone down substantially. It's still under review, so we can't say for sure that is the cost. That's why next month would be the official takeover for it. But that's what we're hoping to keep everything on track. The roof has to drain, it's vital to the roof to function as it needs to in the schedule or getting everything dry, and it's extremely important.
So it's the same material which is more?
It's tapered, yes. So instead of flat, it's tapered. So it is, it's a different type of material, but it's creating positive drainage.
You said it drains to both sides?
Yes, so the ridge is down the middle, it will taper to both. Yeah, so there's scatters on each side, which is good, because then it's, you know, it cuts the slope a height and half, yeah.
So you still want to have the do not exceed at thirty-one?
Well, if you're, if you're good with the revised price, which you don't have the paperwork, I can forward it, Mr. Prue, to you later. It's twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty. If you wanted to approve that, we just have to review it to make sure.
But you said, Beth, you're still trying to negotiate that twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty?
Yes, we want to reduce to make sure that all the quantities are accurate, that it's, you know, there.
Is this a form of quote?
So what would happen is we would generate the paperwork to make it official, to create the change order for it, and that would be attached as the backup information for the pricing. So that would get turned into the change order, which just due to the timing of things, we couldn't get that ready for today, since the pricing is, you know, fresh and haven't totally reviewed it yet. So that's, that's why it's kind of this unusual circumstance.
The sense of urgency is the trucks that are going to bring the insulation for those areas that I was talking about, D and E. And this is only E, but they're loading the marble. So that's what's creating our sense of urgency to fight this, so we're here to get it settled.
The question that I have is, do we want to leave this number at thirty-one? Or we can leave it here?
Yeah, so it would be less based on the revised pricing, but we just don't know if that is the final number, or if we find any other things that need editing. We would obviously send that back for revision and get a revised price. But it would not be the thirty-one, that would be the not to exceed price.
What you're saying is, yes, to approve the not to exceed.
Yeah, just, yeah, but for not to exceed, if we want the re-annoyed, the materials on the chart next month would just be the retroactive paperwork to approve it. It will probably be installed next month.
So why, why is there more labor involved in it?
So the labor for taper is a little bit more. So if it's flat, it's kind of, you don't think about it, right, just like lay it. The taper, there's actually different pieces. So depending on as the slope goes up, they're labeled with different letters. So I think you see it as like the X and the XX and the Z. So each one is different, so there's a lot more thinking involved to, you know, laying out the puzzle pieces. So it's, you know, there are, it actually get higher, there's more layers versus just one old layer, another old layer. It's just a little more tedious. So it's not a significant increase in the labor in the revised price. I think it's like eighteen hundred or something. But it technically does involve a little bit more, you know, laying out the puzzle versus just setting it up evenly.
And there's also more pieces hanging in addition to that, hanging out. The term puzzle is a very good term to use. It's almost like a two-sol puzzle, put together to get your minimal paper at the lower end where the thickness that you needed to bridge.
If no further questions, can I please have a motion to approve the not to exceed change of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars?
Make a motion.
Mr. McGovern makes a motion, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Prue, the second, on call, sir.
District three, Governor McGovern?
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt?
Yes.
District five, Ray Evans?
Yes.
If you know other business, may I please have a motion for a chairman? Mr. McGovern, motion?
Second.
Mr. Prue, the second, on paper. Thank you, Mayor, Chair.